Calling to order the Monday, March 4th, 2019 regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Cipriani, please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henin?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack?
Here. First order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve with two amendments, please. To first, remove item number two from the regular agenda and to remove item number eight from the regular agenda.
Support. Okay, we have a motion with support with a couple of amendments to tonight's agenda. Any discussion, corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Rabbi Ora Ahuvia.
Thank you. And thank you for this honor. I'm the Rabbi of Congregation Sheer Tikvah in Troy. My husband and I live just down the way in Huntington Woods and we consider this our home. So, thank you for this honor. Psalm for community work, words from Psalm 90. "Vehi noam Adonai Eloheinu Alenu, Umaase Yadenu Konenna Alenu Umaase Yadenu Konenehu." May the beauty of God rest upon us. May the work of our hands establish the work of God in the world. And may the work of our hands establish us as God's work. And let us say...
Please turn to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome, Rabbi. It is now time for citizens' comments. When you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda, councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the clerk's table over there. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, I'm Jenny Byer. I am a resident of Huntington Woods, just down the road as well, and I am coming tonight as a representative for Congressman Andy Levin. And I'm doing his community outreach in Oakland County, so I just wanted to say hello to all of you and let you know that our office is here. You know, you've got a hometown Berkeley boy in Washington DC representing us now, and he's very proud. He sat down with the city manager recently, and we're getting up to speed on what's happening. But if there are any community events you want us to attend or anything your citizens are raising, please don't hesitate to reach out to any of us or if you have requests of the congressman for events and so forth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See that our state senator is with us today. Baron McMorro, welcome.
Hello. I am very excited to be here, my first time at the council as your state senator, so I'm incredibly honored to serve in this capacity. Just wanted to provide a quick legislative update. Tomorrow, the governor will be delivering her budget proposal, so it'll be the first time that we are going to see the budget from the governor's office, and we'll kick off the budget negotiation process. So, we have had a number of community events called Meet Up With Mallory that are rotating throughout the district, and this is where we will be discussing the budget for the coming months, so I invite everybody to come out to those. So far, what I can tell you is that there is slated to be an increase in public school funding and an increase in the gas tax to fix the roads. Again, this is the start of the process, so we will be negotiating this for the coming months. So, what is next? Within the district, my office is focusing a lot at the moment on a lot of water management issues. So, I'm sure as this municipality has been dealing with and all of the other seven states or states, cities that I represent within the state are dealing very heavily right now on the lead and copper rule and how that's going to be implemented and managed within our communities. Stormwater management is a huge issue. As we've seen here in Oakland County, the number of lawsuits that are being levied against our municipalities to deal with this issue is a crisis that we need to address head-on. So, we're working on that very aggressively. And the basement flooding issue as well. So, a lot of underground infrastructure management issues that we're working on. So, if you have any issues within the community, within these areas, please reach out to our office. We will be hosting very shortly a roundtable in Lansing with representatives from the DEQ or Deagle, depending on how the reorganization works out, as well as the governor's office and a number of people, just to make sure that we're managing these issues in a way that is tenable for our communities, that we can afford it, that we are following the rule of the law when it comes to underground infrastructure and updating these things accordingly. Update from our office, my staff comes over from Sam Singh's team, so I've got seven to 10 years of experience in Lansing within my office. They're all really fantastic women who are here to serve you. Our office is open in Lansing Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00, and we are available for meetings in the district as needed. So, I am doing this job and exclusively this job full-time. So, if you ever need me to attend anything, please reach out to our office. We are available. I am in the district Mondays and Fridays, as well as Saturdays and Sundays, and really I'm available whenever you need to call or reach out. So, I am digging in on about 16-hour days right now. So, I am here and I'm excited and am available to you. My committee appointments, just so everybody here is aware, I am minority vice chair for the Economic Development and Spalt and Business Committee, which I'm incredibly excited about. And one staggering statistic that came out of that this week in a presentation was that our state is operating at the same revenue as we had in 1968 when adjusted for inflation. So, the fact that we have done everything we've been able to do since 1968 is incredibly exciting, but I think as we go into this budgeting process, we have to have some really difficult conversations and address where we are very candidly so that we can move forward. Also proud to serve on the Energy and Technology Committee, where we recently received a presentation from Consumers Energy about the recent incident during the polar vortex, and we will be learning much more about that incident as we move forward. And I am serving on insurance and banking, which has been no shortage of action as we talk about auto no fault. So, I will be reaching out within the communities in the coming days to learn about specifically how this issue is impacting our communities and what I can bring to the committee. And just wanted to share, on Monday, March 11th at 10:00 AM at the Berkeley Library, we will be having a community meetup event with Rep. Wittenberg, so please come by. And anything else will be up on Facebook, so pleased to be here. And like I said, reach out with any questions. My email is senmcmorrow@senate.michigan.gov. The website is senate.michigan.gov/mcmoorow. That's M-C-M-O-R-R-O-W. And our phone number is (517) 373-2523. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming to speak with us today, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Any additional comments from the citizens while we're still on this department?
Hello, I didn't see... My name is Katie Dukes, and I live here in Berkeley. I didn't see anything about the marijuana issue on the agenda tonight. I think there are too many unknowns to have any stores here in Berkeley yet. The lawyer that came from Lansing to inform us about this issue on February 19th informed us that there are a whole lot of questions regarding the marijuana legislation that nobody knows the answers to. I think that it's poor legislation that there are so many unknowns and that, you know, we came to get answers and to discuss it, and there were no answers for us that night. I believe, if I understood the city manager correctly, that if we have stores, it will possibly, and possibly be a $1 billion industry from Michigan, that's a projected amount, and that the monetary gains for Berkeley would be an additional $116,000 if we had stores in Berkeley. I read that in Colorado, the cities have had to hire additional personnel due to the stores that they have and the issues that have arisen. And I don't think $116,000 is a whole lot of money for hiring new personnel, new full-time personnel, police officers, and whatever else we might need. So, I don't think that we stand to gain much by having stores in Berkeley if those are in fact the correct financial numbers. I think that we should opt out until we see how things work out in other cities. I think this is, you know, a Trojan horse. I think it's poorly legislated, poorly planned, and I think we're being rushed into making a decision, and we don't know what the outcomes are going to be. I also, I'm concerned about who are the people who want permits for stores in Berkeley? Are they Berkeley residents who care about how this is going to affect our city and our schools, our children? Because I know the age limit is 21, but you know as well as I do that kids under 21 are going to be getting marijuana very easily now that it's legal and everyone has more access to it. And, you know, are they Berkeley residents or are they just opportunists that see that Berkeley doesn't have any permits right now and they can just swoop in here and open a store and make money for themselves and then go off to another city that doesn't have any stores, any marijuana stores or any problems to worry about? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Matt, the billion dollars that you referenced at the meeting, was that actually a projection or was that just a number that we were using, just if it was so that we could break down the math?
It's within the range of the projections we've seen, but it was a hypothetical example, as was the city having 1% of the total number...
10.
Yes, the 10 stores, the total number of hypothetical licenses, and then the revenue was also hypothetical. It was certainly to show how the math breaks out.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that those were hypotheticals that we were just using to make sure that we had...
Mayor, it is hypothetical, but it's the same hypothetical that the Michigan Municipal League has been using in its presentations around the state. So, it's one of those questions we don't know the answer to until it's actually upon us, but it's just something to give us an idea of what the breakdown might be without knowing the exact numbers.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing nobody else coming to the microphone, we will close the citizens' comments portion of the meeting, and Ms. Cipriani, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, February 4th, 2019. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1335.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Henin. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda has passed. We now move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing as we do not have any recognitions or presentations today, would you please read agenda item number two, please?
The new number two.
Which is now number, yes. Number three, now number two.
Resolution number two, resolution number R219, matter of establishing an ad hoc Woodward Dream Cruise Committee coordinating the 2019 Cruise Fest events for the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R0219? So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Mayor. It may be 12 degrees outside, but August is truly just around the corner, so this is an annual item that comes back to us every year. The City Council must create an ad hoc committee for the Cruise Fest and Dream Cruise. As usual, you see the normal layout, it's being Dream Cruise, we have a Dream Team built, and so we've got the usual participants from the Public Safety, Parks and Works, and Public Works as well, I'm sorry, Parks and Rec as well as Public Works. Also, there's a chamber person who's to be determined, and then four other service organizations, Tri-Community Coalition, Berkeley Bears Boosters, Berkeley Days, and Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance. In addition to that, we've got our longstanding organizers representing the Berkeley business, Cindy and Mark Kuhn from the lunch cafe. So, including your packets, a memo from Parks and Rec, as well as the copy of the resolution itself.
Discussion. Been there?
Been there. Mayor Pro Tem? Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank this committee for their tremendous work in the past. I'm sure that this will be another exceptional event for the city and the region as we celebrate our automotive history with Woodward Avenue, first paved road in America. And here's to another exciting year. Hopefully, we'll get here very soon because it is 12 degrees out.
Any additional comments? I do want to recognize this committee for all of the work that they do last year. That was the first time that I was technically a part of this committee and actually got to see much more of the planning process, and they're very, very committed. This, obviously, we see the one day, well, the weekend, I guess, but the amount of time that goes into this, especially creating, you know, what happens here on Friday night in Berkeley, is truly special, and it is certainly a labor of love, but it is also very difficult to pull off, much like the next agenda item we're going to discuss. So, thank all of them, and, that was a close one, Ms. Cipriani. Please follow the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M1119, matter of approving Berkeley Days 2019 event beginning Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM and ends on Sunday, May 19th, 2019, at 4:30 PM located at the Berkeley Community Center, 2400 Robina. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M1119?
Motion to approve.
Support by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mayor. Your packet includes review letters from the appropriate departments. There's a 10K map that's included as well with the track on where the runners are going to be running. As you noted in the motion itself, the association has been advised of the outstanding items. For this time of year, it's a fairly routine item for them to get these documents to us as the event gets closer. So, you know, it's just one of the best associations and best events we have. We never have any issues from them.
Hi, Denise.
Hello. I am Denise Brainerd. I'm the chairperson of Berkeley Days, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have about the events this year.
Questions for Ms. Brainerd. Ms. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I thank you again for being here with us tonight to have this opportunity to look forward to a fantastic event. Anything new and exciting? I know in years past, you've highlighted some of the additions and new things that have happened that have brought additional excitement to this. Anything that you'd like to share as a sneak peek of what's coming up?
Well, we don't have the ice rink this year to house a lot of our events, so we've had to move a lot of things around. Because of that, it's been kind of like a big giant Tetris puzzle trying to fit everything in. We are going to be closing the Community Center parking lot, so there will be no parking in there at all this year. Because we have to put the beer tent in the parking lot of the Community Center, I, after speaking with Public Safety, figured, I just thought it was going to be a lot safer to not have any cars in there at all. But, because of that, that gives us a little bit extra room because the beer tent isn't going to take up the whole parking lot. So, I am currently talking with the carnival to try to bring more rides, so we can have rides in both the ice rink parking lot as well as the Community Center parking lot. We're also trying to get some food trucks in there. Not that the food that the Skirbeks have and that the Sons of the Legion have isn't fantastic, but we thought maybe having some food trucks might bring a little bit extra in there. We are going to be putting the craft show in the Community Center. New this year, the Berkeley Junior Women's Club and the Moms Club, Softball Moms Club, is going to be hosting an escape room. So, we are going to have our very own escape room as part of Berkeley Days. And there will be sign-ups on our website, berklidays.com. We are still trying to get maybe some dog event. We've had the pooch pageant in the past. We're not sure whether we're going to be able to do the pooch pageant this year, or maybe we might do a painting with pets. Because who doesn't want to paint with their pets? If you need a pet to paint with, Mayor, you're more than welcome to borrow one of my dogs.
Got one.
Thank you.
So, you know, we're trying to bring in some new things. The problem that we have is just fitting everything in. So, we're going to be having, in the past, we had the Princess Tea Party and we had the Jedi Training. This year, we're doing a Mad Hatter Party and a Glow Party. So, we're going to mix it up a little bit so that we've got some new events for the little kids and, you know, the escape room for the older kids and the adults.
Nice. As a quick follow-up, given there's no parking on-prem, so to speak, I'm sure we're working with Public Safety or Public Works in terms of putting signage and things like that to let folks know if they're used to just pulling in, that, oh, no, can't pull in this year, that kind of stuff?
Yes, we will be working with Public Safety. We're also, I was talking with Councilmember Blanchard about having a drop-off point, and we will talk with Councilman Blanchard as well as DPW about where the best spot to have the drop-off is. You know, Berkeley Days is really for the kids. The middle schoolers who aren't driving need to be dropped off. So, you know, we'll find the best spot that will pose the least danger to pedestrians.
Right. That's awesome. And I was thinking, too, I know in some of the other events that we've had around the city, we do shuttles to drive us around. I wonder if there's an opportunity to partner with the DDA to set up a shuttle run, like if folks park on some of the other municipal lots, just as an idea, right?
Right.
To make it convenient for folks. Then they can do some downtown shopping, jump on the shuttle, enjoy Berkeley Days, and go back, that kind of stuff.
I've discussed that in past years, and it's, I've just had a difficult time, because Berkeley Days isn't downtown, it's harder to have those kinds of events authorized.
Right, well, maybe there's an opportunity this year. It's a different circumstance, isn't it?
So...
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's certainly something I can talk to DDA about, having shuttles. You know, but we've got other parking lots that are nearby. We've got, we're go, we also, the Cub Scouts come in and they do the park your ride. So, there is a place for people to ride their bikes down and park them safely where they will be monitored while you're down there, and hopefully more people will be riding their bikes down there since we've got less parking.
Yeah, and Berkeley is one of the most walkable communities in Oakland County.
It is, it is. And, you know, and the Cub Scouts, they'll watch wagons, they'll watch bikes, they'll watch tricycles, they'll watch whatever you want to ride down there, they will watch. Also, along those lines, we have condensed everything. We did have the cake decorating was on that Monday night, and then we had Family Fun Night on Tuesday night. Because of the changes, we're condensing everything into, you know, we'll have the softball game on Wednesday night. The Taste of Berkeley, of course, will be Thursday night, and that's when the midway starts. But the race, the one-mile, the 5K, the 10K, that's going to be on Saturday morning of Berkeley Days. The bike parade will also be on that Saturday morning. So, we're packing a lot more into a shorter period of time. So, hopefully, there will be something for everyone. If you don't want to be in the bike parade, then you can go and go to the pancake breakfast and have pancakes and wait for the bikes to come in. You know, grab your pancakes and your coffee and go cheer the runners in at the end of the 10K. But there's going to be a lot going on in that shorter period of time, and everything will be up on our website and our Facebook page.
Did you say horseshoes on Friday? Did I miss that?
Of course, there's going to be horseshoes. You know, with it being unknown what's going to happen, this may be the last year. Oh, no. If we're not going to have that horseshoe court after this year, so...
Lot of stakes.
I know. This is your last chance to take that.
I'm getting a new outfit. It fits the last horseshoes.
Because I believe our name is on the trophy from last year.
I am quite certain that it is.
Rubbing it in.
It was not under the previous tenure, so we let it go on last year.
That will be on Friday night.
Excellent, excellent.
We'll also have karaoke Friday night. I apologize for interrupting, and we're trying to figure out what kind of live music we're going to have on Saturday in the beer tent. The beer tent will, because it is outside, we will be closing it at 11 o'clock instead of, it's normally open till 12:00. We'll have it closed at 11:00, just for the sake of the neighbors. But we're hoping for either live band or dueling pianos or something equally entertaining in the beer tent on Saturday night.
Excellent. Additional questions for Ms. Brainerd? Denise, thank you for all, again, your leadership in making Berkeley Days a very unforgettable event every year, and especially with complications as things change and adapt, you continue, and your committee continues to adapt and become more creative and continue to add new things to make it such a great event every year. So, thank you so much for everything that you guys do. We certainly look forward to that. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call?
That's one.
It's so close. And I had it, I crossed it off, too, and I wrote Cipriani, it didn't matter. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll?
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M1219, matter of approving the application by Berkeley American Legion Post 374 at 2079 12 Mile Road for a community special event. The Friday events are on March 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th, 2019, and April 5th, 12th, and 19th, 2019, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM for their annual fish fry. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M1219?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mayor. The Lenten season is starting soon, so the American Legion is hosting their annual fish fry. I know it's a lot of dates here, but suffice it to say, it's every Friday between now and Easter, and they'll be having their fresh fish fry from 5:00 to 8:00 each of those nights. The reason this comes before the City Council is as a private club, they need the permission from the local governing body in order to basically open their doors to any and all who do enjoy a good fried fish. And so, that's why it comes before today. Unfortunately, nobody from the Legion was able to be here, but you'll see in the documentation there are some outstanding items. Again, this is fairly typical for this application. It does come before you on an annual basis. So, the recommendation is from each of the approving departments or each of the reviewing departments is to approve this item.
Any questions or comments on the Legion fish fries? Again, this is an annual item.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just make a comment. This is the Legion's largest fundraiser, so I hope everybody supports it because it keeps our Legion going, and we have a very active Legion. We do a lot with the veterans. We did a lot around Christmas time with feeding veterans and with homeless veterans downtown and in the area. So, it's a very active Legion post, so please support it.
Very active Legion post, and they do an absolutely wonderful job with this fish fry as well. And there are a lot of folks there, so plan to get there early if you would like to enjoy the fish and the mac and cheese and everything else, and get a place and try to find a seat.
Just a correction on the letter from, to Matt Baumgarten from Tim McLean about this event. The date, March 15th, was left out.
Yes, sorry. Every Friday, yes, it is every Friday, though. You're exactly right.
Right.
All right. Anything additional on fish fry? Lent starts this week. We'll see everybody there on Friday. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Now move on to Agenda Item Number Five. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read Item Number Five on our agenda?
Motion Number M-1319, matter of approving a preferred vendor for engineering services and authorizing the city manager to negotiate a professional service agreement.
Is there a motion to approve M-1319?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See, our Public Works Director is here as well, but the city went out for a, to solicit for a new city engineering firm. We did, we went with a RFQ, which is a request for qualifications, giving us a better advantage in evaluating the completeness of an application for the engineering firm. You'll see, we ended up with eight different respondents to this item. Myself and Mr. Schuler went through and sort of evaluated each of them independently and came to the same conclusion. Our Public Works Director is here. He's admittedly works with the engineers firm more closely, has been able to evaluate the various engineering firms, knows based on their responses how complete a job they could do for the city. And again, he, like I, have recommended that we remain utilizing the services of Hubbell Rothen Clark, so.
Mr. Schuler, welcome.
Thank you. So I spent a considerable amount of time going through these proposals, certainly some of them more detailed than others. In Matt's memo, you can see the table that I basically created, trying to compare and contrast the different proposals. There are several factors that I look at as an engineer myself. Certainly, price is one of them, of which, you know, HRC is in the middle of the pack when you look at the other firms trying to compare their prices. But experience, areas of expertise, size of the firm, all of these things matter. And so I created this table that you see in the packet to try to give you a little bit of a baseline of where our thoughts were. And you can see HRC there on the left side, as well as some other firms that did fairly well, and then the remaining firms as you work to the right. Again, more checks mean I felt like they were better served in those particular areas. You've got institutional knowledge, areas of expertise, familiarity, experience with larger government agencies in this area. I think that's important, too. Some of the firms involved are not as familiar with what happens on this side of the state. So I think having expertise in this area is important. GIS background and staffing is another one that I think is very important. This is an area that, as you know, we're making large strides in, and having a capable GIS department to handle those needs is very important to us. Compensation is listed there, years of service, proximity of office to the city of Berkeley, not a huge one, but still an important one. You can see some of the comparisons there. And then I tried to rate, I guess, the overall quality and accuracy of the RFQ document. You know, there were some pretty significant, I guess, typos in some of these RFPs, communities that were mentioned that are not Berkeley, where clearly there was cutting and pasting going on, it wasn't proofread. You know, there were several, there were a few of those, actually, so that's a little disappointing. But, so I basically took a look at everything and, again, tried to establish some measures of comparison in these tables. And it was pretty clear that, this was a good exercise, number one, but it was pretty clear that HRC rose to the top as far as these go. And then there were a couple other firms that I would see as, you know, following that could also potentially be considered. But I think the overall value of Hubbell Rothen Clark, certainly since I've been here the seven years, they've been a trusted resource, somebody that we rely on heavily. There's a lot of ebbs and flows in municipal consulting, busy times, slower times, and because of the size of their firm, they're able to ride with those waves and serve us very well quickly. So at the end of the day, I do feel like HRC is the best choice for the city of Berkeley.
Thank you, Mr. Schuler. Questions regarding this process or the Director's recommendation?
Looks like we have a citizen.
Well, let's let, unless the Council has any...
I do have. Yeah. As we're negotiating this new contract, are we going to build an expiration date again to then review again in the future?
Good question.
Yes, my intention is to put at least a three-year, and then perhaps with Council's ability to evaluate, maybe another year after that, but a termed agreement for sure.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I would, just a quick thought, if I might, you know, a lot of the contracts that we do enter into, we tend to run with a three-year term, and for engineering services, professional services, at least from my perspective, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to a longer term. I think we do need to establish a deadline, but even a five-year term, you know, something like that where you revisit it, again, I would certainly support. But this is not something we want to revisit certainly every year or anything like that. Just the institutional knowledge and the background, the number of projects that we're working on would make that very challenging. But I do think we need to establish a term to this.
A follow-up, yeah, five-year term is actually what I was thinking would make more sense, you know, to revisit it periodically but not so frequently. I mean, this is a large exercise for you, so, you know, that it's not a huge burden, but to make sure that we continually reevaluate.
Sure, thank you. Additional comments from Council before?
And it is important, I know Matt mentioned it as well, but the other, there are other departments that work with the engineers as well, not to the magnitude probably that Public Works does, but I know there's other departments, Planning, Public Safety, have been involved as well with smaller projects, so.
Okay, we have a president behind you.
Charles Thurl from Berkeley. A couple of questions. Were any of the respondent firms certified as small business, veteran-owned, woman-owned, minority-owned?
Going off memory, I don't recall looking at either of those. It wasn't, the RFQ didn't require that to be called out in the response.
That was not asked for in the response?
I don't recall it, it wasn't a mandatory item, and we didn't call for that specifically to be a part of the response.
Okay. As I recall, the solicitation document, and I may be off on this, was pricing and terms included in the document? Because that's really not a qualification.
I'm sorry, I understand.
Terms and conditions for a new contract?
Sure.
Was that included in the solicitation document to ask for that?
We did ask for compensation, there was a compensation portion, asked about hourly billing rates.
Compensation or price to the city? That's where my confusion is.
Right.
Using the term compensation is what they pay to their people, not what we pay to them.
Sure. Ms. Mayor, what we asked for was their hourly billing rates, to say it differently, the hourly billing rates, we did ask for that, based on the number of people who would likely be involved in the project. And so for that, this being an ongoing professional services, we didn't ask for like what the single cost was, like a construction bid.
No.
You don't typically see that. So we did ask for basically what they would be charged on average hourly rate by what their likely team would be, so.
Okay.
A lot of them did it by band.
Right. In the evaluation process, did the evaluators know which response went with which company?
Yes.
Okay, you didn't do it blind?
No, sir.
Why not? That's, that's, that's good practice. I mean, I've reviewed thousands of proposals, and every one of them was done blind. That you didn't know, you don't want to insert any biases or prejudices by knowing the name of the company who you're reviewing.
That's just not the process we happened to go through this time.
Okay. I also am concerned that many of the evaluation criteria are kind of squishy. They're not specific and measurable. And how do you measure Berkeley institutional knowledge? And what's the difference between a one checkmark and a three-checkmark in Berkeley institutional knowledge? How do you measure that? There's many of these, there's many of these things that are subjective, they're not objective. And I would have hoped to have objective evaluation criteria rather than subjective like these.
I believe the responses, as well as our evaluation process, paints a pretty clear picture of what firm could best suit the city.
Okay, so you're, you're comfortable then with these subjective evaluation criteria?
Yes, sir, and the recommendation of the City Council.
Okay. Then I will put forth my recommendation to the City Council is postpone action on this tonight, send it back, have it redone correctly with specific and measurable evaluation criteria, and that the evaluations be done blind, so you're not introducing any kind of prejudices or preferences in the evaluation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will tend to defer to those that are much more familiar with this, especially Mr. Schuler, as he has dealt with the engineers much more intensely than any of us. We are not involved in the day-to-day, we're not involved in this bid or this RFQ process, but if our DPW Director is comfortable with this engineer, and I would assume from everybody that I've heard from in the city, that our residents are very comfortable and very proud of our DPW Department, which includes our Director, I am inclined to take his recommendation over somebody who maybe isn't as involved in the day-to-day with the city engineer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question, actually. So included in the scope of services for HRC or for all these other companies as well, have we included language that as the engineering firm analyzes, studies improvement projects that we take into account consideration of more environmentally friendly and sustainable equipment and materials? So at the very least, I guess, putting another way, making sure that standard practice, that in prepping these preliminary engineering analysis, cost estimates, feasibility studies, all that kind of stuff, that we kind of take into account that consideration. I know this is blending a little bit into the construction side of it, but just something to kind of get out there and have that as a consideration as we move forward.
And we have, and green infrastructure specifically was one of those components that was spoken to in the proposals as well, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I had some process concerns as well, and I spoke with Mr. Schuler through email this afternoon, and it fully cleared up any concerns I had, and I'm comfortable with the recommendation from staff.
And to be clear, personally, it would not have mattered which of these companies Mr. Schuler would have ultimately recommended. It could have been any of the ones who we received. If he believes they are qualified and they are the best fit for the city of Berkeley, I am likely to take staff's recommendation, unless there's some specific information that changes things. Any additional questions or comments?
Agreed.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Having worked quite a bit with HRC in different projects, I'm quite comfortable with this. They are a big firm, they have a lot of insight, worked with them on their traffic departments, worked with them on other things, and I'm quite comfortable with the way this was done. I think that they're a good firm, and now the city manager needs to negotiate the proper compensation with them in the final agreement, and we're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before moving on?
Just one. Councilmember Henon mentioned a five-year contract. Is that up for discussion, to have a longer contract?
It's one of the terms that have not yet been negotiated, Ms. Mayor.
Right, we have to negotiate that. This is just, you approve the preferred vendor, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a professional service agreement. That's all we're doing today. Okay, seeing no additional questions or comments. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on M-1319?
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read Item Number Six on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M-1419, matter of approving the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for the city of Berkeley to participate in the County of Oakland, Oakland County Sheriff's Office Special Weapons and Tactics SWAT Team. The city of Berkeley will provide a minimum of one sworn officer to be on the Oakland County SWAT Team for $2,500 annually. This intergovernmental agreement shall take effect after signed by both parties and may be canceled by either party with a 30-day notice.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
M-1419.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Gavin. Who do you have for the chief?
Thank you, sir. I only say my, to express my disappointment that they won't actually let me join this. They just want me to sign the documents. Other than that, the Chief Director, Public Safety Director Matt Kane has all the information for Council on this item.
Chief?
They won't let me join either. I guess after we pass the school, we could. Right now, or in the past, Berkeley has been a member of the Southeast Oakland SWAT Team. There was a decision made a couple months ago that it would be more beneficial to all the communities to merge with the Oakland County SWAT Team. Phenomenal equipment, phenomenal personnel, phenomenal training, and they actually get the real-world experience of callouts, and that's where you get the experience. So this is basically just disbanding Southeast Oakland, and then all the cities are joining with Oakland County SWAT Team. I've seen them work for years in my former department. I've got their command staff on speed dial. I can personally vouch for them, great team and great equipment that the Southeast Team just didn't have access to. It's the same fee that we paid for Southeast SWAT, and I'm sure we've already gotten more than that in training and equipment for Sergeant Papke.
Thank you, Chief. Questions, comments for the chief, Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Does, excuse me, weapons, do they provide additional weapons, or do we have to provide...
Because we already carry the same pistols that Oakland County does, anybody that doesn't, they provided pistols for them. We didn't need it because we already carry the same pistols and the same generation. I believe we're carrying all the, we own all the equipment, but they also have specialized equipment, too.
Okay, so they're, you're using our long guns, too?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any advantage to this in the area of asset forfeiture? If we're involved in something, is there any money coming back to the city?
There is some potential, although asset forfeiture's been going down. I'm not really sure how long it's going to be around, but there definitely is some potential. Typically, it's the narcotics units that'll do that, but it's always possible to get involved in that.
Thank you.
Based upon our participation.
Additional questions or comments for the chief? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question about the agreement itself. So in Section Four, under the municipality's responsibilities, 4.2.3, it says municipality will permit its employees to respond to SWAT team callouts when requested by the Oakland County Sheriff's Office. Municipality's permission may be granted on a case-by-case basis and will not be unreasonably withheld. Is that more just making sure that we have adequate coverage on our side of things? Exactly. And there's been a couple callouts already. This was a process, you know, had to, it took a while to get the contract done, and it's gone seamless so far. Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Additional questions, comments? All right, thank you, Chief. You have provided sufficient explanation for everybody up here.
Thank you.
Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on M-1419?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Now move on to Item Number Seven on tonight's agenda. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read Item Number Seven?
Ordinance Number O-0219, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amending Division Four of Article Eight of Chapter 82, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to prohibit the possession and use of cigarettes, tobacco, and nicotine products by minors, and the sale, giving, or furnishing of cigarettes, tobacco, and nicotine products, including electronic cigarettes, to minors, and to prescribe penalties for violations.
Is there a motion to approve O-0219?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, the proposed ordinance comes before you today to directly address vaping and the Dennis McDavid, who would ask us to take a look at some of the ways that we hope, we think we can start to stem the tide against vaping. We looked at our ordinances, looked at a couple of different versions of this, and thought the best way to, to send the message that this was a serious offense was to expand the current section we have, specific to the possession and sale of tobacco, and to expand it into, include also nicotine products. And so the ordinance that you have before you widens the definition there to not just actual cigarettes themselves or any other tobacco products, but also any of the products that contained, contain nicotine in any of the way that it can be inviped. It also updates the penalties portion of it under this, under this item, consistent with our previous conversations, possession of this is going to be a mispolice infraction, but the sale of this, to sell this item to a minor is going, the suggestion is to have that remain a misdemeanor. So that's actually a criminal charge. We worked closely with the city attorney's office, and Public Safety's reviewed this as well.
Mr. Attorney, anything else you'd like to?
I think the city manager stated it very well, and the, actually, the preamble, the heading itself pretty much says it at all. This is our, our effort to try to address problems and the, I, I guess the proliferation of vaping products, as the city manager indicated, we do that through the definition of nicotine products. And I did want to point out what Matt talked about right toward the end, though, is the, the penalties. Council does have some discretion there, but we did set it up for the, the minor who violates, that we did it as a civil infraction, feeling that it at least initially coming down with a misdemeanor violation is a little, little bit heavy on the minors, whereas for people actually selling, furnishing the vaping products to the, the minors, we should come down heavier, and those are prescribed to be misdemeanor violations.
That's a pretty clear discrepancy from a minor who was in possession of alcohol. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but I think what you mentioned, somebody who's caught with, you know, the, the minor who would be caught would be treated as a misdemeanor or as a civil infraction, so that is not a misdemeanor.
That's correct.
For a permanent record, whereas the one who has sold, provided, that minor would be charged with a misdemeanor.
Correct.
Other questions from council, more comments on this? It is certainly an epidemic if you are in and around schools, as Mr. Baumgartner mentioned. This, not only have we heard from a number of residents on this issue, but superintendent has certainly seen a stark increase in the use of these products, and it's definitely something that we need to address, and if there's a way that we can add some additional, hopefully, deterrents or prevention to this, I think we need to take those steps, and at least that's, that's what we're doing here this evening. Seeing no additional questions, Counselor Blanchard?
Just a comment, Your Honor. I've been at two events recently, the PTA Founder's Day and after the races, when I talked to school board members, and on those instances, they have also mentioned that they are concerned about this and, and wanted us to look at this, and I told them that that was ongoing, so it's, it's quite prevalent over there, and they greatly appreciate our help on taking care of this, so thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Kind of building on that, and back to the premise, how, one of the ways in which this started with the superintendent reaching out to us, might this help serve some form of a broader communication outreach, both to the, to the students and the parents and the businesses, that we've taken this next step forward? Perhaps there's an opportunity to collaborate in outreach and communication in partnership with the school district to put a unified message out there, and now that, you know, if we're on the cusp of taking this action tonight, there might be a way to, to let people know about it. Their thoughts underway, or is that something we could pursue?
There are thoughts underway. In fact, Superintendent McDavid's initial email actually stated, you know, something like this would underline the seriousness of it and helps them build their messaging to their students, so we absolutely want to be a part of that. The public, Public Safety's youth officers also are going to be an integral part in sort of continuing that conversation with these students, that it's just a terrible idea. There's no, I mean, legalities aside, it's just a terrible idea to put this stuff in your body. And now we've also get to back this up to say, listen, many cities in this area have also said the same thing. Not only is it bad for you, your, your health, but it's bad for your, your clean record to, to run awry of this as well. So yes, there's absolutely a messaging plan to, that's going to end up going around this.
Excellent, thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, this is the first reading of this ordinance. There'll be a second reading at our next meeting, no additions or changes to the ordinance as written? Okay. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on O-0219?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Cipriani, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-0319, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amending Section 50.73 of Article Three of Chapter 50, fireworks of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to modify and reduce the days and times when the ignition, discharge, and use of consumer fireworks is lawful.
Is there a motion to approve O-0319?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Mayor Proton Baker with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thanks, Mayor, but I'd like to defer to the city attorney on this item.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers are all aware of what seems to be an annual thing in this city and elsewhere, where when, when, when the, when the summer comes, especially on the Fourth of July, when, from all, the way things sound, it's like the Wild West out there, and we have residents come in and we have to tell them, well, you know, since at least the year 2012, when the law was changed at the state level, and some of our home rule authority was, 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 was taken away and, and preempted such that we have to allow the fireworks. It's always a difficult time. The state legislature did, though, at the, toward the end of the year, toward the end of the last term, did amend the state fireworks law to restore some of our local authority, and this proposed ordinance before you tonight attempts to take full advantage of that restored authority to place some additional limits on when fireworks will be permitted to be shot off in the City of Berkeley. And, and basically, it goes from the current ordinance, which, which allows up to 30 days a year, the people can legally shoot off fireworks, it would go down to 12 days a year. We're still going to have to deal with fireworks around the Fourth of July, and on New Year's, those are probably the, the biggest times, but, but at other times, we'll be able to prohibit them. So as I mentioned, through this ordinance, if adopted, it will take the fullest advantage, it will go to the full extent that state law allows us to, in order to limit the use of consumer fireworks, and I present it to you for your consideration, and if adopted, hopefully, we'll, it will, it will warm up eventually, and we will get to fireworks season, so hopefully, we can get this in place before we run into those issues again this year.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Questions for Mr. Stern? Clarifications, comments for Mr. Stern? Anybody over here? No? Yeah, Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, um, two items. First, want to thank our state senator for being here, and maybe urge that maybe the state legislature will give back some additional local control for us, you know, maybe you can take that message pack for us. I'd also like to ask Chief Kane, if, you know, we're, we're limiting fireworks by passing this as much as we can, but should somebody violate the new ordinance, setting them off after hours, wrong day, setting them off in public property like the sidewalks or the streets? What would you like residents to do in those situations?
Call us as soon as you can. Quite frequently, we get, we get to a location and it's over, depending upon our, what else we, you know, our run volume, but just like anything, ever in doubt, give us a call, let us go out there. We'd rather go 20 times something that isn't important than, rather than miss one thing, so please call us anytime.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Henon's question reminded me of an important thing that I left out in my explanation, and that is, if you look at the penalty section in the ordinance, we have adopted the penalty that the, the state law prescribes, which is, it is a $1,000 civil infraction for violating this, for shooting fireworks off outside of those. So if the chief is called, and if they are able to enforce the ordinance, it's going to be a, a pretty heavy penalty to deal with, and, and I would think that will be an extremely effective way of getting the word out to people that you, you can have fun with fireworks, use them safely, but you have to stick to the days that they're permitted.
And that, that point that you just made at the end is, is the important point.
Yes.
We are not trying to take away anybody's right to enjoy fireworks, but it happens every single year that we are inundated with residents who have interrupted, been interrupted, kids, dogs, because of fireworks going off at all hours of the night. So the biggest thing we are trying to do is not stop anybody's enjoyment of them, but being kind and courteous neighbors by prescribing timelines as to when they are and are not permitted. That's an important point. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor. To help extinguish an explosive situation here.
You're out of order.
I was going to ask a little bit about the communication outreach. We talked about that from the prior item. In what ways will we help communicate this so that those who do choose to, to partake in this can do so safely and, and legally? So how are we going to get the word out?
Much in the, much kind of going off of our previous conversation as well, the, the city would be going through all of its various communications outlets to, to spread the word that there are days where this is allowed, and there are days where this is not allowed. There are time periods, the thought process was sort of kind of banking on something that the mayor mentioned about, that it really comes down to kindness and respect for the neighbors in the community. There's a, you know, there's, there's plenty of opportunities here to have a good time with fireworks and to celebrate important holidays, but outside of that time period, it's, it's quiet neighborhood, and it's, it's something we do for, for everyone around us. And so that's all going to be kind of rolled into the messaging for this.
Thank you.
Counselor Mr. Stein?
I assume this ordinance will be well advertised so that people know what the new ordinance is.
Okay. Counselor Member Dean?
At the risk of sounding like a fun spoiler, why July 5th? It's in there. July 5th, if that, 5th, if that date is a Friday or Saturday until 11:45, because it's...
It's the weekend.
That's what the state law says.
Oh, okay, there we go.
These are right out of the state law.
Okay. Thank you.
So if it's not, the state says you can't do that. Additional questions or comments? No, we are not the fun police, but we are trying to be kind neighbors. Okay. Seeing no additional questions or comments, again, this is also a first reading. There'll be a second reading on this at our subsequent meeting. Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll on O-0319?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Next up on our agenda is communications, and I believe Councilmember Henon is up first?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
All right, first with the Environmental Advisory Committee. We got some stats on our, how we're doing with recycling. We've, since they've gone single stream, we've seen a 38% increase, and it's one of the largest in the Sauk Row region. We're also, the committee's reviewing the draft of the city's energy plan, and they're going to continue that at their next meeting. The tree board has been investigating options for grants that they can use for various projects, and they found some, what looks like some low-hanging fruit to help fund the tree planting that we already do. That was not an intentional one. So they are looking at how we can get those grant monies to help defray some of the costs we already spent on tree plantings in the city. They're also continuing to look at inventorying our public trees, what that'll take, and preparing for the upcoming Arbor Day festivals. I had the opportunity to attend the Michigan Municipal League Core Weekender. That was about nine hours of training on leadership, municipal planning, and planning and zoning. That was a really good course. Anyone that hasn't had a chance to do it yet, I'd recommend that when it comes up next. Also went to some Oakland County training on master planning for your community's long-term health. Two of our planning commissioners were also there, Marty Smith and Greg Patterson, so picked up some good things as we're going into our master planning process. And then finally, I recently was able to attend the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance Annual Meeting, and I'm, this is the first time I've seen in depth the kind of stuff they do, and I'm very impressed with the work they do. Family-centered counseling and referral services for children in the school district, skill-building, summer camp scholarships, youth recognition awards, and providing mentors. So it's a really good program that we have in the area, and their next big fundraiser is the Taste of Berkeley, which kicks off Berkeley Days. That's going to be Thursday, May 16th, so that is always a lot of fun and encourage people to attend and support a worthy cause. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor member Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick things from Planning Commission. There were two site plan approval requests that were subsequently approved by the Planning Commission, one for Folio on Coolidge, and then another on 12 Mile. There was a condition for the Folio approval. Planning Commission also had a robust conversation on master plan update, excuse me, feedback on scope of work and ideas for inclusion into the master plan, so it was very well-done. Lot of great ideas, and fun to have that conversation, so that'll be ongoing. The, excuse me, the next meeting for that is actually going to be March 26th at 7:30. The ZBA had a variance request from Green Lantern, which was denied by the ZBA, and there's not going to be a March meeting for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Coolidge met, the Coolidge Task Force met. Most of the discussion centered upon the Water Main Extension north of 12 Mile on Coolidge, and included in that was the need to make sure that communication strategy gets out there to anticipate any hiccups or backups that we're going to have as part of that. The next meeting is going to be this Thursday at 8:00 AM. And then, switching gears just slightly, April 1st this year is the tax foreclosure deadline that comes up each and every year. In this case, to that, if you know anybody in our community, if you know anybody in other communities that are facing tax foreclosure, have them contact the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. Our office does one-on-one meetings with folks all throughout the county to make sure that we get people to stay in their homes, keep active businesses going, everything like that. Over the, the last, I believe it's eight years now, our office has done over 18,000 payment plans with folks to make sure that we're, everybody is, is staying in your home. Like I said, keeping the property is the, is the number-one goal. So please have them contact the Oakland County Treasurer's Office if you know of anybody. Number there is 248-858-0611. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gavin. Councilmember Dean?
Just a quick update regarding what's going on at Parks and Rec. Early bird registration is now available online, so if you're thinking about registering, or if you want to get in on a class or a activity, you can do that online, or you can always call. Parks and Rec will be running a spring break camp April 2nd through 5th. Registration is available online or by calling. Youth programs beginning this month include Barrel Across, Dollin' Me Tea Party, Abracadoodle Tuzi Doodlers, I don't, I don't know, Ricks for Kids, and a Parent Tot Playgroup. It all sounds like a lot of fun. I did have the opportunity to attend the DDA Master Plan Open House, and I found it to be very informative, and there was an opportunity to give feedback, a very detailed evaluation form, and I'm guessing that this will be available on the DDA website as well, but it's, a lot of great work has been done and continues to be done, and if you want to have a voice in that, you have to speak up, attend those things, fill out the forms, email the DDA. They really do want, want everybody's input, so. And then I also, with councilmembers... And then I also, with council members Gavin and Blanchard, had the opportunity to attend the Founder's Day Dinner at Farina's. And all I have to say about that is we have an incredible group of educators and volunteers in our Berkeley schools. The excitement, the energy in the room that night, recognizing volunteers and educators for all that they do, it made me want to go back to school. And it's been a really long time since I've ever thought that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Three plus one, quick updates here. First, continuing on the DDA theme, the board meets next week's Wednesday, which is the 13th, at 8:30 at the library. And they would like to extend the gratitude to all who were able to attend the recent Downtown Berkeley Master Plan Public Input Session. And in addition to that, there's another forum coming up here on Thursday, March 14th, the Multi-Community Planning Open House. So Berkeley is a part of regional efforts with other communities in our neighborhood to find ways to enhance our shared streets with increased pedestrian and bike access, multimodal opportunities, and green infrastructure that would help mitigate stormwater runoff as well as beautify both Woodward Avenue and Coolidge. So again, that session is coming up on Thursday, March 14th, 6 to 8 o'clock in the evening, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at the Public Safety Second Floor Conference Room, just across the street from where we are at the moment. And you can always visit downtownberkeley.com for more information from the DDA. The Historical Committee meets next week's Sunday at 4:00, also across the street at the Public Safety Second Floor. They're working on some really nice plaques, some more formal and permanent plaques to commemorate some of the bigger and longer-standing exhibits within the museum, those being donated through various organizations, and those look really sharp. And as mentioned earlier, they're beginning to prepare for the Berkeley Days coming up in May as well. The museum has opened most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00, and on Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The Technology Advisory Committee meets in two weeks' time on Wednesday, March 20th at 6:30. They are continuing their outreach to the various other committees within our city to help understand their technology needs so that they can work together to enable their programming. And in the bonus department here, this is probably my first time quoting a billboard. I don't know if I quoted a billboard before. But the Stone Ridge Church in Alabama has a sign that says, "Honk if you love Jesus, text while driving if you want to meet him." And so, I'm back on this kick again. So drivers who text are 23 more times likely to be involved in a crash than if you keep your eyes on the road and your hands on the wheel, as the song goes. Teens who eat while driving are three times more likely, he got that, three times likely to be in an accident. And you've heard me quote this statistic before, average speeds, if you look away from the road for five seconds, right, one, two, three, four, five, you've covered the distance of a football field. Could you imagine closing your eyes and driving your vehicle for five seconds? You've covered the distance of a football field just by looking off to the side or doing a quick thing. So please don't do that. And so with that, I want to thank you, and we will have some additional signs, speed signs showing up on Coolidge and on 12 Mile in the near future. The signs are actually there, they're collecting some preliminary data, and they'll be active in the next couple of weeks. I want to thank Lieutenant Coburnick for leading this effort and all the public safety folks for all their efforts to help make this a success. There'll be a sign northbound on Coolidge near Oxford and on 12 Mile eastbound near Royal. Again, the intent of those is just a friendly reminder of the safe speed at which you can traverse our lovely roads here and enjoy our downtown. And if you need to go faster, you're welcome to somewhere else. Thank you. Thank you much.
Councilmember Stedman?
Okay, first of all, the Parks and Rec fundraiser on the 23rd was, I think, a great success. They had 80 people there, which is all the tickets that they could sell, and it was a lot of fun. Beautification, our next committee meeting, we've taken a couple of months' break because of the weather, and there's really nothing to do. But we will be meeting on the 13th, that will be our next meeting, so we can start planning things to do for the summer. If anyone has any great ideas of something that they would like to see beautified, please email me or Dan or Anella Mihiascu. The library has a lot of events coming up, programs coming up in March. You can find them on the website, you can find them in the press releases that Matt Church sends out, and you can also find them online. So check those out because there's always good ones for all ages. The Citizens Engagement Committee is still in the process of developing an ambassador program to find people in your neighborhood that seem to know a lot of people in the neighborhood. And if we need to get the word out about something besides just the emails and the newspaper and so on, that we can just pass it along through the block, so to speak. And so we're working on that right now, and we'll have more information for you at a later time. I'd like to congratulate the Berkeley Days, or the Berkeley Days Committee and the Cruzfest Committee for all the work they're doing, all the work they've done in the past. I mean, they're the two, I think, most involved committees in this entire city, and they do a wonderful job, and they meet year-round. So thank you for all of your work. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Today, I want to talk about severe weather awareness week. It's not till the 24th of March, but after I watched TV today and saw the destruction in Alabama from tornadoes, I thought, maybe I better bring some of these brochures that we have from the county and make them available. They're on the table right there. We have one about family safety during tornadoes, severe weather safety, sheltering in place, and emergency kit guide that were provided to us by the Oakland County Homeland Security Team. We also have Oak Alert. This is a thing that you can register for, and you will get notifications on severe weather warnings, you'll get notifications on a lot of things that are happening from the county. So, Mark, you'll hear about this again because we have another meeting before March 24th, so I'll be talking about this, but severe weather week, March 24th to the 30th, and there'll be a special siren test. And that siren test will, hopefully, businesses will incorporate that, schools will incorporate that into their training of their people to say, this is a severe weather warning, here's what we need to do in our business because this is severe weather awareness week. So you'll be hearing about it again from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think, Mr. Mayor, just two quick items. I want to thank those that were able to make it to the chat with Matt. We were the few but the proud. There were only three of us, but we were able, for the first time, to livestream that conversation. And we're building up to allowing people to participate from wherever they may be. So breaking down the physical barrier of actually being here to chat. So looking forward to the next one, likely in the next quarter, that we'll be able to do something like that. So thank you for all that was able to actually physically attend, and thank you to the millions that watched at home. I do want to update the city council as well as the residents that Berkeley continues to participate in the George W. Kuhn Stormwater Meetings. Right now, they've been handling sort of a two-track system. They've been meeting with the city planners across the GWK footprint as well as the engineers across the GWK footprint. And those aren't familiar with the acronym, the George W. Kuhn Drain is the 12-Towns Drain, or it's got a couple of different names, but essentially, it is a larger version of we have here, which is a combined sewer district that leads to the facility that collects these things, that collects that water, cleans it, and then releases it. So their issues are very much the same as ours, and they want to reduce the amount of stormwater that goes into the system as a whole. And the way that, one of the things that they're talking about doing in order to help reduce that is to implement more of the green infrastructure into each of the city's site plans and parking lot areas, and anywhere we have an inordinate amount of paved surface for no particularly good reason. So they're looking for areas, a way to retain that water, detain it, and ultimately divert it, which is exactly what the city of Berkeley needs to do. So kudos to the Water Resource Commissioner's Office to recognizing the regional need to tackle these issues. It's something that I know that we've been saying for several years, and I'm very happy that they're making such good progress on it. So those meetings continue.
Thank you. Ms. Cipriani, I want to thank you for pinch hitting today. I apologize for, I believe, only one so far. Anything you want to add before we move on? No. Okay, thank you anyway. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, when we were talking about the SWAT agreement, in answer to a question, Chief Kane spoke about forfeitures and how maybe that's not going to be as reliable of a source of funds or revenues in the future. And I just wanted to very quickly update council. There was a rather significant U.S. Supreme Court decision just a couple of weeks ago in February. And meanwhile, I believe both the State House and the State Senate have acted upon, in Michigan, have acted upon bills, I don't know if they've gone up to the governor yet, but have acted upon bills to add restrictions and limitations on the, basically, the seizure and forfeiture of assets during suspected drug enforcement. It's not ruling it or curtailing it altogether, but would add another component or element of due process, for lack of better words. But it's something that likely means in the short term, from a budgeting standpoint and so on, we might not be able to rely as much on the level of funding that we've seen in the past, that there'll be a few extra hoops to jump through. And in some cases, the city and law enforcement agencies won't receive those funds at all as they used to. So just something to watch out for, the drug, the asset forfeiture, civil forfeiture is still out there, but there's going to be some new rules that apply to it, and we'll just see how that all shakes out in the future and how much it affects our, you know, our share of those assets related to drug enforcement.
Thank you. A few items. First, I want to thank the representatives from our respective branches of government that are here today, U.S. Congress, me and our state senator. We certainly do look forward to engaging with you. There are a number of issues impacting Berkeley that happened at the federal level and certainly the state level right now, and we look forward to cooperating and being able to share our viewpoints with you as openly and as freely as possible. On February 7th, I had the opportunity to attend the State of the County at the United Shore Auditorium in Pontiac. And aside from hearing about the diversification, some other great things happening in Oakland County, the city of Berkeley had received two shout-outs that night, one for being a new member of the Main Street Oakland, the crew, and for being one of the safest cities in Oakland County. So those were very nice recognitions for the city to receive during that address. As Councilmember Stedman mentioned, the Friends of the Parks and Rec fundraiser, Yucaride fundraiser, they had 84 folks play it and a number of other folks that attended in support. So that was a tremendous event as well. And they put together a lot of time, they actually may be outgrowing the room they're using. They have to actually expand in the future, which is awesome that they're getting incredible support from our residents. And then I want to kind of end where we started. Beginning of this meeting, we heard a citizen comment regarding recreational marijuana and what is going to happen in the city. We had a town meeting a couple of weeks ago on this event, and despite how some people viewed or critiqued the meeting, which depending on whatever side of the issue you sit on, you're going to be able to do that anyway, and it happens all the time, the goal of that meeting was actually just to find out what residents want. I mean, I just want to hear what residents want. Those of you that were released there who filled out the surveys, yes, I am well aware that the online surveys can be manipulated. You can take them on multiple devices. You can do it both ways, too, whether you're for or against it. No, that is not going to be the lone factor in my decision on that, but it is going to be a data point. This is an issue that I have found very little middle ground with residents. There's not a lot of folks that I've spoken with that are like, eh, I don't care. It's either a yeah, let's go, or it's a no, let's not do anything. So we're still taking all of the other data, the online surveys, quantifying that. The plan is to have a work session with council at our first meeting in August and then make our decision the first meeting in May. So there's still, April, first meeting in April, what did I say?
You said August.
You know what? Let's go, no, we're going to do May. We need enough time. I don't know how I got from April to August. But yes, April work session, decision in May, at least as a preliminary plan unless something drastic changes enforces us to revisit our timeline. We have gotten, I'm assuming council members have gotten, a lot of feedback from residents via email, people we see, folks, thank you for showing up to our meeting and talking, having a conversation with us as well. It is something that we are all grappling with, trying to figure out what is in not only the best interest of the city, the best interest of us now and the future. That conversation is ongoing. And again, that work session, look for that the first meeting in April. And with that, Ms. Cipriani, what is, or would you please read item number nine on the agenda?
Closed session, matter of considering whether to meet in closed session after conclusion of the regular meeting to consult with the city's attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, namely, 277-99-Woodward-LLC versus City of Berkeley, Oakland County Circuit Court Case Number 2017-159355-CB, because consultation in an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the city's litigation or settlement position. Discuss attorney-client privileged communication.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
So moved by Mayor Protem with support from Councilmember Dean before we take the roll call vote. Want to let everybody know, there will not be any decisions. That's why we moved communication up. There will be no action taken. These are informational closed sessions regarding the things that Ms. Cipriani just mentioned. With that, Ms. Cipriani, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes, we shall move to closed session.[1771.61]